There we go. You good? All right. I hereby call to order this meeting of the Planning Board Tuesday, April 14th at 6:00. Our first order of business is to see if there's anyone from the public that wants to speak about anything that's not on our agenda today. Is there anyone that wants to speak about anything? The minutes from February 24th. I think the agenda's a little awry. It's not 21:05. I think it's 20:15.
Oh, sorry.
But that's okay.
Yeah, make sure you have the right quorum. I'm not sure if you do, actually.
Well, he doesn't have it. We'll talk about that in a moment. Quorum, you're talking about the minutes, the date of the minutes. I haven't actually seen them yet.
They should be right there. They're in front of you underneath the agendas.
Oh, yeah, here it is. Has anyone had a chance to review this? No? You read it, huh? And you?
I don't remember those.
I recommend that we postpone approval of this until next meeting so that we can have a chance to read it. Is there anyone else that...
Sure.
All right. So, I don't think we need a motion for that. We'll just postpone it. So, our business today, the sole item on our agenda, is the continued public hearing of the proposed zoning amendment on building size provision. And we're here having a joint public hearing, but unfortunately...
We don't have a... I do not have a quorum since I'm the only one here.
Our fellow committee does not have a quorum, which means that we can't hold a joint public hearing.
Well, you could. You can still say testimony.
Well, we could hear you, obviously.
And if they wanted to invoke the Mullins Rule for their own, they could.
Is that something you guys want to approach?
Can you explain that?
The Mullins Rule?
Yeah.
Like a mulligan?
No. The Mullins Rule is a state law. The city adopted it in 2006, I want to say. What it does is allows members of a board to take testimony and then they can vote on it. They can't miss more than one meeting. And then there's an affidavit that needs to be signed saying that you read the minutes and/or watched the video so that you're up to speed on it. We use it for special permit applications if there's not enough members. And if we've got an applicant who still wants to provide testimony, then the Planning Board members sign an affidavit saying, yes, they've reviewed the minutes, yes, they've watched the video, and then they can vote on the permit the next meeting.
So, your other members that would have to go through that process.
And I have an affidavit form that I've developed that I can send to you and Barbara.
And there'll be video.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah. We invoke the Mulligan Rule.
So, given that, is there anyone from the public that wants to talk about the building size provision?
I do.
Josh?
I'm Josh Rosenblatt. I am a citizen of East Hampton. I've been here almost 13 years. And I am also the Chair of the Economic Development and Industry Council. So, I'm here to speak as an individual. But as the Chair of the EDIC, I do want to just share or reiterate the fact that we have not had a quorum for quite a while. And for a long time, it was unclear as to what exactly the quorum rules were. So, for a while, we thought we did have a quorum, but we didn't. So, we're working on that. We're trying to get new members. We're trying to change the size of our group so that it'll be easier for us to have a quorum. That said, though, we have been given this a lot of discussion. I did send to two of you, the two chairs, links to the audio in hopes that you could listen to it and at least hear our discussion so you get the color of what we're talking about. That said, me, Josh Rosenblatt, as a citizen, my thoughts are kind of in between on both sides. I see the intent of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, and I think it's very admirable. I, too, don't want to have large retail come in. I lived in Rockville, Maryland for 20 years, so I really know how that can change and affect the culture and the feel of a small city. And I don't want that. That said, my impression of the proposal as written is quite restrictive. And if it had to be that way, I would personally, if it were my vote, I would vote against it. That said, I know Jessica, the Planning Department, has made a number of proposals that make it more appetizing and do not send a negative... make the ordinance more appetizing and less of a negative message to potential business owners. So, my personal feeling is if the Planning Department's recommendations were adopted, then I would be in favor of. And that's it. I will keep you posted as to how the EDIC functions or doesn't function in the future.
Josh, thank you for that. I have just two quick questions. One is, I want to just confirm, in general, the changes that you're seeing that we've been making as a group in these public hearings and that Jessica's been recording and tracking, what you're saying is those changes you're in favor of?
Yeah.
Okay. And how many people are showing up the EDIC right now is my second question.
We generally have about four or five. The problem is, is that right now, we're a 15-member body, but we only have the potential of having eight. And we haven't had that in a long, long time.
Yeah, of course. How can you meet at 4:00 in the afternoon? I expect to get people down there. Why don't you have it at night at 6:00, 6:30 or 7:00 like everybody else?
Well, because there are people on the group, myself included, that wouldn't be able to come if it wasn't...
Why? When I was on it as well at the time, you were called as a business-oriented group and allowing the folks are able to take a lunch or schedule it in as part of their business. In fact, some of the companies, like the bank representatives, it's part of their business responsibility to attend the meeting.
Well, then also responsibility of that group, if they're going to initiate a business in town and make it work, make the time available. What happens if somebody else that worked for them aren't going to watch it, guys? So, it's just going to make people work eight, nine, 10 hours a day. And they want to see what's going on for like a month or two. Like the buildings in your city. And there's nobody there.
Everyone is struggling. And if everyone out there is listening, and I wish more of you were, come join us.
I'm not criticizing. I'm not making a suggestion that you change the meeting time.
Well, we did approach... the one person who really had not been there for a long time, we did approach that person and say, is the time of the meeting a hindrance? And we didn't hear back. And we do, you know, if we are able to change our size to 10, it would be easy for us to make a quorum. We have two people, two new people lined up who are ready to join.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yeah, please.
Local Works has been folded back into EDIC, is that correct?
Right.
So, you're also sort of representing that perspective?
Yeah. We haven't done... Local Works hasn't done anything in several months.
I think it's important for the community to know that, that you're also, in a way, the voice of local work.
That's true. Because I was coaching... or I was, I guess, Recording Secretary for Local Works when it was in operation.
Does anyone else here want to speak about something relating to the...
I would like to... a few thoughts that I want to pursue with the Planning Board, and I'm glad that the proponents of this article are here, too, because it's a collaboration and, I think, between us all. And I think it's an effort to try to, I think, strike some balance between the restrictions and, you know, what we might feel is a little bit of encouragement, especially to small business growth in the city. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to speak about it at the last meeting, you know, in the essence, in the effort of time, you know, with a lot of other discussions that went forward and everything else. So, I wanted to take this meeting as an opportunity to appeal to the Planning Board about the possibility of including it as an additional section in the Highway Business District section and administrative review process. I have... I talked to Jessica about it this afternoon. She thought it would be a good idea that... she said it belonged to the Planning Board members, so maybe perhaps you have some copies of it. I don't know. Anne and Dave, do you have a copy of that?
I just saw it late this afternoon, Bill.
Okay. I have a couple of copies of it here.
Okay.
I can make more copies than a copy of it.
Well, I didn't find copies. I would apologize if it's, you know, some of the wording is a little rough.
Is this what we're talking about?
Yes. It makes it a little rough, but... and raw. I'm not a great writer or anything. But what I wanted to do is to at least get my thoughts down and make a pitch for this to be included. I think it might help in a lot of instances where we have small businesses who want to relocate to existing buildings that are already there, that has already the existing parking infrastructure, as long as their, you know, their retail services are somewhat compatible that... I find it kind of duplicative and almost a huge burden to small businesses to try to go through the expense of either a site plan approval process or a special permit. And we know the site plan approval, you know, there's expenses involved in, you know, site plans, site design, you know, you've got to hire professionals to get involved. It's a time-consuming process to go through the Planning Board. And I dare say that even the special permit process is even a longer process and a more expensive, arduous process. There have been some cases where that has put a strain on some small businesses who try to, you know... they're more worried about continuing the business from another place. Maybe they've expanded a little bit. They have to move quickly and they... so that they can kind of... they don't suffer a lot of downtime. And I thought it was worthwhile to at least bring this to the forefront for discussion and possibly an inclusion in the Highway Business District zoning section. I think it's also probably even more applicable to the downtown business area as well. And so, maybe there could be some cross-references there to this section. I kind of plugged it in numerically after what Jessica was creating for the building cap issues and everything else.
So, these are changes that you've written up to the existing 611, 611, 13, 51?
Correct. Right. Yes. Right.
Okay.
I happen to think that this isn't necessarily... try circumventing the Planning Board and the Planning Board process in that it can, you know, I think it can help to free the Planning Board up to doing some, a lot more important things. You know, we desperately need the guidance of the Planning Board as far as doing some comprehensive planning for the whole city here. I've heard on numerous occasions that, you know, it's really... the zoning bylaws really are in kind of a need and some overhaul and everything else. I don't know how that's going to get done. I know time and time again, there's been some efforts on Jessica's part to try to get that included and some timeframe. The best thing we can kind of do right now is at least respond, you know, albeit a piecemeal. At least we can kind of respond to at least the whole section of the zoning bylaw here and perhaps get something that's maybe comprehensive to the Highway Business District. This administrative review process was recommended in a letter by Jessica in January to the Planning Board, too. So, I think it's something that would kind of work with her sculpt of things, too. And I guess so. And I also want to mention that this proposal recommendation came through strongly in the Highway Business District Design Review Committee as well. And so, I'm trying to promote some of these recommendations through this process. And I hope that the Planning Board may see the virtue in looking at this administrative review process as something that would be a positive note to promote some small business development, growth in the city, and something that, you know, may help you streamline some arduous site plan approval, Planning Board approval processes when it comes to some of these small businesses. My recommendations include a building size, and I gave some thought into how that, you know, for a purpose and everything else. So, it's kind of spelled out there. Perhaps some of it can be used. Jessica can kind of use it and, you know, however she deems is necessary and makes sense in terms of the whole Highway Business District bylaw that we're kind of writing up in here, so.
I can ask you a question. You stated here that not to exceed small business, not to exceed 4,000 square feet. How many stores have come into East Hampton that are about 4,000 square feet?
How many? I don't have a number in mind. That was a number...
I can tell you, there was only eight, but there's probably more. I might have missed them. But they were all below the 4,000 because the stores are on somewhere like Cottage Street and, except for Union, are small stores.
Yeah.
But we lost Big Y. But Big Y opened up in Southampton. They drew six stores. A box store, if you want to call it that, draws small businesses. Now, you had the tractor store that came in. That wouldn't have come in if Big Y wasn't there. You've got Peoples that came in if Big Y wasn't there. And there are other small stores that are now competing to get into that small mall across the street because there is a lot of draw.
Yeah.
And when you have a mother store such as Big Y, they will draw the smaller businesses because smaller businesses feed off of larger businesses.
Okay.
We had... I worked for Caldoor for almost 30 years, and we've opened stores and malls. We were the only store in that mall. Within 10 years, there were 25 stores in there, and they were all basically small businesses, especially in West Hartford. If you look at North Hampton, how it grew because of the larger stores that they're feeding on. So, I can't say that we should be for or against. I don't know which way any one of us are going to vote, but I can see that the bigger stores, whether they're 50, 60, or 70,000 square feet, will draw smaller stores. But unfortunately, we're running out of room.
Where did you get the number for that?
Well, that was a number... all I can say is that was a number that we discussed in the Highway Business District Review Committee meetings. So, it was kind of done collectively by the owners of the businesses in the area and something that we just carried through. It's a number that may be too small, too big. I don't know. But it was a number that we thought might be appropriate to demarcate as a threshold to demarcate between a small business and one that's in a little different genre.
How many small stores do you foresee in the next 10 years coming if the 4,000 was to be the limit?
Well, this... we're suggesting that this is related to existing buildings. That's what this is specifically... it's not a brand-new building.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, that needs to be kind of brought forward here and kind of emphasized.
I think it's something we should definitely discuss about. Anna, did you have a...
Yeah, so I just wanted to talk real quick. You know, we just got this, you know, late this afternoon from Mr. Cannon sent over. And I don't... I guess, just in the spirit of compromise, I mean, we've sort of, obviously, we're pretty close here on what we have currently, you know, and I think where Jessica's latest draft puts us, pretty close. I'm not necessarily for or against this, or there may be some merit here, you know, into what Mr. Cannon's saying. I don't disagree with that necessarily. But I guess what I'm wondering is, and I was going to talk to Bill maybe ahead of the meeting here, is kind of extending olive branch of saying, is it possible, since we're close to being pretty well compromised on this piece, that we sort of maybe work offline to get this detail together and introduce that, you know, in a fairly soon, you know, to have it be brought in front of the board on something we, again, work together to kind of compromise a little like we've done in the past? And I mean, just so we can get this moving forward, I know there's some businesses like Cumberland Farms who are sort of waiting here. And I just... I think there's some... again, they're... I just can't say for or against it, having got it relatively recently, and we're so close now. I just, if we can move this and... Bill, I'd be happy to sit down with you. We can work out some of the details here and see if we can't come to some level of agreement before we even get it to the board to have to iron out, if that's agreeable to you.
I mean, that's fine.
Okay.
The predicament, I know, the planning department here is just very...
We've actually discussed this a little bit. Jessica did bring this up to us once before.
Yeah. And I don't... I think that this meeting's probably going to continue again. I know it's prolonging, you know, what we all want to see come to a provision here. And...
It certainly will since...
But I think there's, you know, we should still take the appropriate time, do the best job we can.
Yeah.
Come up with the best product we can here.
No, I agree. Can I say something here?
Yeah.
I think Bill's proposal should be taken completely separately because it's a completely separate option he's given us. It's got nothing to do with the 50,000 square feet. We talked about this in January. We never got it on paper. It's always doing is bringing something to the forefront that we all probably are going to agree on, and it should have nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight. That should be entirely different kind of a thing is bringing it up.
Yeah.
It's got nothing to do with agreeing or not agreeing, or we should have or not have. It's a totally separate issue.
There are some issues that are coming up because of this.
Not because of this. Not because of this.
It's 50,000 square feet.
It has nothing to do with...
Yeah. I apologize to the Planning Board. Look, I just, if I could just say one last thing. You know, we're into the throes of trying to revise at least this section of the zoning bylaws, but it kind of wiles me a little bit that, you know, we keep on approaching the zoning bylaws and all these piecemeals, you know, issues and everything else. It drives me crazy personally, so.
All right. How I was planning for... Do you want to finish?
Yeah, I just wanted to finish my thought. I said, again, I...
Go ahead. No, no, no. Please, continue.
No, I guess I just... I'm saying we're really close on this one, on kind of what we've been talking about all along here for the last several months. Like I said, I'd just like to finish that, and then I think we definitely... I think we could dive into some of these details and take time to really analyze this right. We're talking about, you know, changing approval process and warehousing, adding warehousing to the Highway Business District and a commercial zone, adding warehouse. So, again, and I'm not saying that all this stuff is like... I'm not saying I'm opposed to all this or for all this. I'm just saying I think it deserves a proper analysis, separate from what we're doing with the size limitation and lowering our acreage on lots. And I said, as I said, I certainly would be happy to, you know, Bill and I, I know Bill, and I think we've kind of had a new olive branch here after we've been able to kind of compromise on this proposal that we can work together.
So, here's my thought. And then, you know, since what's been advertised, what's been in front of the City Council has been the building limitations, size limit. This would be materially different than what we have the purview to review. So, I would see this as something that would have to be submitted to us, and I'd be happy as the Chair of the Ordinance Subcommittee, if you bring me some... bring me this. If that's what you want to bring forward, then I can get it on our agenda. But I think in relation to this specific topic, this is ancillary.
It seems like you're getting a... and it's certainly not a vote by any means, but the voices up here seem to be leaning in that direction. David?
Uh-oh.
Actually, I'm sorry.
My computer's just started at 6:30. What happened?
I don't know why you're...
I had 6:30.
What did Bernie have you bring in tonight? What were you bringing in tonight?
I just crafted a little bit of some text on a proposal for administrative review.
Instead of having the Planning Board do it?
On small projects with existing buildings and existing facilities, it was something that we discussed in the Highway Business District Review Committee.
Yes.
It came through as a recommendation for small businesses and to encourage some small business development or growth or bringing people in, that as they could go through an administrative review process, if they're moving into an existing building with existing parking, there's not much of an impact there because it's existing and that that could be done in a more expeditious manner than going through a long site, the venue site plan approval process and/or a special permit process.
All right. I'd like to give... do you have more to say, or are you...
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
David's been very patient in the back and has had his hands up for a while, so.
I guess we're kind of, it seems currently hashed out right now. Administrative review, I don't want to money the waters, but I agree with Bill in introducing it now. Because I'm coming from a point of view is if every one of us in the room tonight, every one of us agreed that all residential land in town was going to be preserved and commercial land wasn't going to be used or anything, what are we going to do to get more money? Because tomorrow night, there's going to be the first introduction of layoffs. It's going to hit, right? What are we going to do? I'm just saying. And at some point in time, the Planning Board and City Council have to be a little bit more proactive and aggressive about growing the city, not becoming marketers, not becoming businessmen. But if we agree to preserve this, restrict that, what are we going to do about getting some more money? So, what I'm getting to, to finish up, is I keep hearing how we don't have money or time to update the zoning. Well, okay, let's start attacking it piecemeal, you know? And so, if we do this, Dave and Dan's proposal, and then a few months later, hit administrative review, to me, that's fine. That's fine. And then, I'm coming... I'm going to let you know, I'm coming back at over 55 at some point in time. I am, no.
Support you.
I'll come back with more preschools, whatever. The town needs more money. And the thing with the money is, it's for the quality of life. That's what the whole idea of city services is, right? So, anyway, that's it.
Okay. Just before I go for you, David, did you have more you wanted to add?
Yeah. I missed what went on here earlier. Although, I have one thing to say to S. D. Fiedor today, and I told him I would share this with the committee. Okay. I have no respect, Mr. Gardner. I did a good job on the Planning Board. He was honest. Vote's out on Hagan. They took a vote years ago to bring business into town. They put it to the voters. Now, Mr. Hagan has his opinion, that's true, and this is Eddie Fiedor's opinion. And they voted to bring in business into the community and bring in whatever will come. And it was by about 400... I was told about, he wasn't quite sure of the number. You might remember that, Chet or Harry. What was the number they won by?
I don't know.
He thought it was 400 votes. So, for...
It was about that, to bring forward.
Okay. So, for Mr. Gardner to say, nobody wants big business in town, that's not true. It just isn't true. If you put it to the voters, you would find that people want to shop in town. And everybody talks about the wonderful downtown, and it is wonderful. You want to have a drink, you want to get a haircut, you want to go to a beauty parlor, you want to get a pizza. That's pretty much it. Now, I'm telling you the way I see it. You can say I'm wrong, that's okay, but there's nothing down there. And I told you before, out of 8,000 shoppers for groceries, 1,500 shop at Big E's and the rest go out of town. Now, we have to save the planet somehow. Everybody's bringing in solar, they're trying to do things to help things, okay? You got to have shopping in town. Now, any business on North Hampton Street is not going to hurt downtown. Rents down town are cheap. They're never going to be cheap on North Hampton Street. Development downtown, you could grow up a little or do whatever. That's probably not going to happen in Harry and Chet's lifetime. I won't say my lifetime. Okay? You got to think what's good for the town. Now, the green people, the people that, tree hivers and all, want to keep everything natural. That's pretty wonderful, and I agree with that. You got to have, as David said, some money coming into town. You got to fix your schools. into town. You got to fix your schools. People are leaving town. Okay, now, Southampton, God knows, is a screwed up city. But they have the greatest elementary school in the world. They have young kids, young people want to live there if they can afford it. It's expensive. Taxes are expensive. But they will go there because the elementary school is absolutely wonderful. They're busy there seven days a week. They cook pies, they get parents in. And Hampshire Regionals, okay. It's out there where if they have drugs, they catch them because they're out in the middle of nowhere. And I'm not saying drugs don't exist, but it's a pretty fair place. Okay, I'm not saying East Hampton's a bad school. But they have, you have to put money into education. It raises taxes, it raises property values. If you don't do that, it doesn't. So anyways, getting back to Eddie Fidor, Mr. Gardner's, I hear that people don't want business in town. I don't believe is correct. That's number one. Okay, so I said that already. I personally believe more business is good for business. Okay, everybody's afraid of whatever coming into town. You want to protect this one and protect this one. This one we'll throw under the bus, like they did the dollar store of your friends. They throw under the bus. They got cheated. Okay, but we'll discuss that another time in front of the city council. Okay, one other thing I wanted to add to, okay, and David made a very big one the other night. We're not going to put four...
Boyle or Gardner?
David Boyle. Okay, I went to the fire station today. Now, historically, the reason towns don't go up over two or three stories is they don't have a ladder truck tall enough because it becomes a safety hazard. This is historically. Now, I asked them how high their ladder truck went up. It goes up 100 feet, 10 stories. We're always going to build a 10-story building in town. But there is a medical center looking, and they probably have plans for a four-story building, and they know how much parking they need. So to limit it to three stories, to me, you're, they're going to go someplace else. Southampton, they're going to build whatever they want because they really want business. Northampton, there's no place to go. So they've let, the only reason they want to come to East Hampton, and one of the reasons is there's no place in Northampton to go. Okay, and then one other point, and because of raising the height of buildings, parking spaces in town are worth between 20,000 and 25,000. That's what they're worth, and you got to have parking to have business. Now, the only reason East Hampton is doing what it's doing, instead of trying to stop growth out here, if you knock down Eddie Fidor's block on Union Street and put a road around back there where people could drive in and have parking, all of those houses would become business. They'd be worth another 150,000 a building because they, because they could produce business and generate. There's things you can do that fix downtown. So instead of trying to stop stuff, you should try to, your goal should be to encourage things. Now, again, we're not going to build it. But if you, somebody can put up a five-story building and has the proper parking, why wouldn't you let them? They're all good jobs. Nobody's getting eight bucks an hour that's working at East Hampton Savings Bank, which I happen to hate that building, by the way. Okay, they can put up a five-story building. It's all about safety and convenience for people. And the people that are going to rent a five-story building on Northampton Street aren't going to rent downtown because the buildings aren't designed with all the computer stuff, and it just doesn't work that way. And, you know, I saw a thing on the movie the other day. It's not hard to do the right thing. It's hard to know what the right thing to do is. And it kind of, it kind of, it kind of made sense to me. So to limit the height of buildings to three, to three stories makes no sense when you have limited commercial land on Northampton Street. And, you know, East Hampton Savings Bank's a nice building, and I shouldn't be making fun of them. They shut those lights off in front, it'd be fine. But not just my opinion, nobody else's. Just like Mr. Gardner, that's his opinion, nobody else's. But to limit stuff when, if David Boyle, or if Bernie Gaul, or if Eddie Fidor, somebody has the opportunity to put up a five-story building, God bless them, bring them in, take the tax money, great jobs. Doesn't make any sense not to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. I think we need to give David a chance to...
Well, first thing is, I just want to say, John, I don't, I don't know, and everybody here, I have never said nobody that I don't want, that nobody wants big business in town. I have never said that. I said that in the master plan survey, people said they do not want a big box in town. They do not want big box stores. Well, the definition for big box is 50,000, is over 50,000 square feet. That is what a big box is. Big business, we have since, you mentioned Big Y. No, actually, Chet, you mentioned Big Y. Big Y is not, doesn't exceed 50,000 square feet. And you're right, it does attract businesses. So...
So you can count, or you never went over 55,000 square feet?
Right, so this proposal would not limit the kind of development that you recognize as being actually beneficial to a community. What it does do is it does not allow a superstore to come into town where you can get all of this stuff under one roof. Then what is the point of any ancillary businesses even coming to town? Because here it is, it's like the company store under one roof. Now, I also want to say that it doesn't prevent businesses like, I'm going to use Walmart, because, you know, they're really known for superstores, you know? They do have small, smaller stores. They're 35,000 feet.
Right.
So bring them in, that, no problem. This is a multifaceted issue with buildings that are larger, retail, larger than 50,000 square feet. That's really very important that that's recognized. This is not big box developers. There are no names associated with this in terms of, I know somebody in one of the discussions at the EDIC, it was brought up that when one of the members said, well, when she talks to people, their idea is that big box is, you know, Trader Joe's. Well, that's not a big box store. It doesn't look like a big box. It's not a big box, and it's not over 50,000 square feet. So people's thinking about what big box is will be really changed if we do adopt a 50,000 square foot limit, and then we do get a Walmart or a Trader Joe's or anything out. They may say, well, geez. So if it doesn't make any difference, you know, to adopt a limit like that for many other reasons, you know, then why not do it? One of the reasons I would say is, and there's also been something said about the message it sends to people that might want to locate to town. If I were a person interested in starting a business and being the 80% of retail operations that establish operations in building sizes of 20,000 square feet or under, and most of them are far under that, as you pointed out, in East Hampton, well, the 4,000, I did think that we already had something about 4,000 square feet downtown. But as a trigger point, anything over, it triggers a harsher review or something. But as you pointed out, we have all these businesses in town now, and none of them are over 50,000 square feet. In fact, all on cottages are like 1,000 square feet. So we have all this stuff happening. The message it would send is if I feel secure that I can, comfortable that I can move to East Hampton, establish a business, and next year, some big box isn't going to set up shop a mile away and put me out of business, which happens, study after study after study after study, shows that that's exactly what happened.
What would happen, and it's happened in other states and in other cities, I'm not a big box store. I'm going to build a 40,000 square foot store.
Yeah.
But next year, I want to add on, and then the following year, I want to add on. What happens is that 40 now is 80, and now is because what they're doing is they're growing their business upwards. It can be done that way. But what my issue was, bringing in a larger store brings in smaller stores, depending upon, so East Hampton lost everything when Pleasant Street dropped all their businesses. Because when I came into town 40 some odd years ago, we had a Levi's store, we had shoe stores, we had dress stores, we had all that, all the long Union and down Cottage. We don't have that now. And who's going to bring that in but a larger store?
Well, there's peoples right in, right in Southampton, there's peoples. They're not 50,000 square feet. They've been in business for a long time now.
But they're the only store. There is not, there's no competition. Eventually, someone's going to come in with competition if they can find the space. And I don't know if they can find it here in East Hampton.
Well, they, that's an issue for the landholders, in my opinion. There's, there's land that needs to be developed, and really, when it comes down to it, how will that land be treated for, who will it be sold to? That's something the town has no control over. We don't own the land that we're talking about here. We're just talking about, you know, how, what can happen on it, should it sell. Now, part of this proposal that's not being talked about, a lot of focus has been on the upper limit. But, you know, the other part of this proposal changed the, the minimum lot size from, changes it from five acres to, I believe it's now, we're talking about two acres now. This looked very enticing to a small operation of the kind that I think we really need to have. Right off the bat, the guy just caught wind of it somewhere and said, well, what's going on here? He had said that he, they were almost passing East Hampton by because they could only get an option on so much land that it wasn't enough. So just simply by reducing the required amount for a certain type of development is going to open up a lot of possibilities. Now, I don't know why it was set at five acres minimum. I asked a few people, nobody seemed to know. It didn't make any sense, and I think that this makes a great deal of sense. Another thing I want to point out, the definition, because it's something that never comes up either, I did vet this with the building commissioner to change the definition for gross floor area. And, and this is something that's, that actually adds to the usable space within a structure. The old definition took the dimensions of gross floor area from outside, from exterior to exterior wall surface. Well, considering we have, you know, and I, I am, I build, and I, I'm up on, I'm actually certified code enforcement official, and, and it's, I'm steeped in this energy, you know, energy requirements, the new energy code is something people are trying to meet. Well, this, everybody can probably imagine, it means thicker walls. So to eliminate the disincentive for doing the right thing is, you know, we changed in our proposal here to make that inside to inside. So the actual gross floor area is actually usable space for retail purposes, and you don't count the thickness of the walls or, you know, closets and such for heating and cooling equipment, that kind of stuff. So we're, you know...
Do a measure inside to inside.
That's right, yeah. So you can have walls two feet thick if you want. So that actually footprint of building would be greater than 50,000 square feet. It's the gross floor area inside. So just, a lot of thought went into this. I mean, we spent months on this before we even approached anybody on it. And we use a lot of parameters, you know, Stop &amp; Shop really puts people to the edge. The town was pushed to the limit, citizen versus development. That's hovering at 50,000 square feet, though John said another one. But it's about 50,000 square feet, right? Especially if you measure inside wall to inside walls, not outside, right?
Jessica, do you know the size of the building Stop &amp; Shop that they finished up with? Do you know the size?
Approved, I'd have to go back and look at the plans.
But it's close.
I looked, the records are all gone. They stole all the records from Stop &amp; Shop.
I did want to point out one other thing that's kind of curious. Josh?
What's that?
Please, go ahead.
Josh mentioned living in Rockville and the problem there. And Rockville happens to be on our list of communities that adopted a size, structure size limitation. In the year 2000, they adopted as a city, a limitation of 65,000 square feet. So, you know, communities about this size are doing this. And because, actually, supercenters, people who create supercenters like the small towns to establish in because they figure, well, we need the money, there's something going on here, that they can locate here, we're going, please, come here and do something. And with this, it creates a Mecca from other communities to the superstore. Roadwear travel, more accidents, more police, more everything. And I just want to say one more thing about this. Some people are painting a picture of like we're in dire straits for money. I just want to point out that East Hampton has about 365 communities in the state of Massachusetts. We are about number 286 on the list for taxes. We are way near the bottom for tax rate. Yet, we are in no worse financial condition in terms of amenities that we experienced. We just built a high school a few years ago, new high school, Millside Park. We've got boardwalk happening. I mean, we are an active community that is doing a lot of things that a lot of other communities wish they could be doing right now, and we're doing it at a tax rate that is far less. I would be, and I almost, I know it's going to, you know, this is like, I would be more amenable to an override than having, because we already have a low tax rate. We could actually afford to do an override.
Then you're not on a, you're not on a, you're not on a social security then, right?
No, I know, I know.
Why don't you go talk to the firm about a solid, solid structure, a modern...
No, I know, but I'm just, I'm just saying...
I know, I see your hand up, but I haven't heard from you yet, and I'd love to hear. It's like we're on the same page.
Again, my last three topics, most, three minutes. There's one thing that I'm concerned about that you brought up that I've seen happen in two other communities here, with people saying, build because we need the money. When you take up all of the land and you have built all of these structures on it, you are still going to have teachers to pay, you're going to have the yearly incentives for that. These people have contracts that every couple of years, so you're always going to need more money. When you've taken up all of the blades of grass, you're still going to have that issue. So I agree, and I'm, I'll come out and admit this in public, I am a Republican. I am the last person on this planet that wants to see my taxes go up. But I would rather have my taxes go up than to see the town go away. Second thing is, I had somebody approach me the other day, a personal friend, who was looking to start a business similar to what River Valley Market is in Northampton. She was asking about the field that I had for, would that be receptive in East Hampton? People want to come to East Hampton. It's just, I think that the people of East Hampton and the downtowns don't want the mega, the mega buildings. I hate to sound big bucks, but I think that that's where we're at. You brought in something like, and I don't even know their sizes, you brought in something like a Walmart or even a Home Depot, I have heard, brought up relatively recently. Manchester's is going to go out of business because there will be no more need for that. And it's easier to park in front of a Walmart than a Home Depot than it is to find a parking place downtown. Parking is the issue, and I can tell you the year, the first mayor's campaign, signage for parking was a huge issue. We have four grandchildren that live with us that I have to pick up to at school every day. Try to pick up a kid at Center Pep and School in the afternoon. There is no parking anywhere. People at the Piscopo Club don't want you parking behind that. I understand it, it's their law. But think about how far you have to walk to get a kid at school because we have a kid named Gardner who has to be handed to an adult. Parking is an issue. I think that the parking, somebody brought up on, on Facebook the other day, on the East Hampton page, East Hampton needs a parking garage. I'm not saying I want a parking garage. It's just that I disagree that big buildings are going to take care of our money problems because they're not. You're always going to have money problems.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else I see still there? I just want to let people out and spoken. Please, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. One, I want to go back, I think, for these gentlemen, Dan and Dave and Bill and Dave, have been very good about full disclosure in there. They mentioned, when they said businesses want to come in, they mentioned Cumberland Farms. But I don't think it's fair to say, oh, there's a medical building that wants to come in, but it's four or five stories. You need to disclose that. Because I certainly could sit here and say, oh, I know certain people that want to come in. And that, I think, can sway in people's minds. But I think you need to say, who is it? Who are these people that want to build this medical center? And I just want to be very careful with that. And I just want to piggyback on what Sue said. Flurry lumber would go under, and that, that would also be a shame.
Oh, a shame.
I just feel that... And I just feel that we have a master plan. People have spoken. You see all these wonderful write-ups in the paper about all the cultural things that go on. And, okay, we bring in all of these mega stores. Ask Chickaby how they're doing. Take a ride down Memorial Ave or whatever the name of it is. And I don't know if they're flush with money. So, it's not, it's not the panacea that everyone's looking for. But I just had a couple of things I wanted to say.
Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken yet? Wendy, you want to say something? All right, now, hold on, I see both John and Dave want to say something. So, at this juncture, would you like to hear more or?
I just had a question about this word footage.
Yeah, I'm happy, but I think, I think maybe let's limit it. Because I feel like we're regressing a little bit.
Agreed, we're kind of going over the territory a bit. So if we can keep this to like a minute or less, go ahead.
Just a clarification, Jessica's paperwork today in the required lots, in the highway business, plant business, she has proposed, you know, a line through five just two acres. And the next page, on industrial, on industrial zone, plant business, line through five just three acres. I'm just asking.
That's okay.
Thank you for pointing that out. So which one is the?
It's two, isn't it?
Two, yeah.
You asked for two. That's what I was giving you.
So, as I understand it, this definition for the gross floor area, which was under the original proposal, as I understand from Jessica, is not part of what we're trying to approve, guys? It just kind of fell off a little bit or?
Well, it's going to be.
I didn't hear any question about it. And I had a question about it, as a matter of fact, you brought it up about the interior.
Yeah.
Measuring the interior rather than to, you know, the exterior. And, because I didn't hear anything about it, I asked Jessica. And, like, I don't know whether that's still part of this proposal. And again, this is scope creep. It's like, you know, now we're getting into definitions and it gets too much. How far are we going?
Well, this was in the original proposal. The reason I brought it up tonight is because I had the same sense that you did, that it was getting left in the dust here because we've been focusing on the size so much. And it, so, so it's not, it's not.
I was asking about it.
It's not scope creep or anything, it's actually been in there. It's been on, it's still in here, it's been on.
Or it's unchanged at this point?
Nothing has been changed about it. I suppose it's open for discussion if you think that it's a bad idea to change the definition and leave it as it is and the, you know.
Well, I assumed it was proposed because perhaps there, it was a desire and there was some ambiguity in the original definition.
Well, the biggest reason.
You know, because there's updated notion about building envelopes in our the ounce for energy efficiency in our the ounce. And, you know, we're getting thicker walls in our the ounce. I'm kind of from an old school, you know, the building footprint is the building footprint, you know, corner to corner regardless of the inside, you know, area. If that means that, you know, it gives a more of a, you know, more, more square footage to the actual use, you know, of the building. And if it meets the, you know, the expectations of the planning department, helps clarify something, then that's, you know, I'm all for it, I guess.
Okay.
If that's the, if that's what needs to happen. But I just thought of bringing it up as something that, I don't know where we were with that.
Okay.
I think, I would like to see, I feel like we made a lot of progress last time. And I'd like to, and I know that we have made those, some of those changes. So I think at this point, I'd like to talk about the changes that we've added in.
Do you want to Jess review it?
Did I, did I add another couple of things here? During our process, the last two years trying to get permits, they were very, very concerned about parking or traffic on the street. Very extremely concerned. Thirteen months they talked about it, the last planning board, Ari and Chet were on it. And they were so concerned that they were gonna kill the project over parking. Ann Parisso got up and she crossed her hands and she started talking about, she took her 20 minutes, 25 minutes to get down North Hampton Street. And that was true. And she was angry coming home from work and it was 25 minutes and parking's a problem. Unfortunately, three days before that, I was over checking my land on North Hampton Street, pulling out and I look up. And after 13 months of listening to traffic, I'm sitting there cursing myself. Now, Ann Parisso's in front of me. This was the chairman at the time of the planning board. She was in front of me. And I'm sitting there and she was right, it was 25 minutes. And I said, Jesus, they've been bitching about parking now for 13 months. Here it is, the chairman of the planning board stuck in parking. But there was only traffic coming one way. And the traffic just wasn't moving. So, I'm cursing to myself, talking to myself, you know, we're trying to get this thing approved. The chairman's stuck in traffic. And she finished her discussion there and.
Punchline.
So let me finish the whole thing. So, I've been waiting there for 25 minutes and a car backed, four or five cars pulls out. And he lets me in. So I, traffic inches a little, people are getting closer, so I pull in behind her. I'm still talking to myself. Now, when it started, it was light out. And now the sun's gone down, it's dark. And we're inching down the street, now we see traffic, you go ways, traffic coming one way, traffic coming the other way. I get to the top of the hill looking at the river. And up on the hill were two cruisers and they had a.
What is this? I'm, you're losing me. Yeah, where are we going here?
Yeah, this is on the topic.
All right. Bring us where we need to go here.
Okay, there were two cruisers up there with their lines, they had the whole half of the lane blacked off. And traffic could only use the right side of the lane. But she never added that. And she was gonna kill the project on traffic. But then of course Jason Dooley had his cell phone out and somebody's texting him. And then he kills the meeting for two weeks, she comes back and kills it on parking. And they let David Boyle park in front of his business on South Main Street.
I don't.
I know you don't get it.
No, I'm sorry.
Let's move forward to the review.
We have some of that though.
Yeah, all right. So Jessica, would you please lead us through the changes that were made since the last meeting?
Okay, so you had asked me to draft some purpose statements, which I've done. So there's three new ones that have been put in the draft. If anybody's looking for copies of the new stuff, it's right here. They're non-stapled, but they are correlated.
Do you have one?
So those are, those are new from the last version. I also made a couple of comments in regards to the redevelopment of the existing commercial buildings. Somebody stopped by my office and started asking me questions about, you know, the business that they had thrown out there was the building supply store across from the post office. What if they wanted to expand? So I went and looked to see how much square footage they had. You know, they had less than 20,000. Still plenty of room to expand. But it just got me thinking to this language here and just being clear about, when we're talking about redevelopment of existing buildings, we're talking about buildings that are strictly 50,000 square feet. Are we talking about additions and sort of, you know, to Chet's point, a business comes in and they want to put an addition on, they're doing fine, they're thriving, we're expanding. You know, what are we, you know, to think about that. So, somebody can't expand above 50,000 square feet, is that? And that's what we're saying at this point. So, just to point that out, that as it's currently drafted, you know, a business wouldn't be able to expand even above 50,000 square feet if they were a single retailer. So, I'm just putting that out there. And then, you asked me to start talking about incentives. I really had a struggling time here, mostly as you can see from all of my commentary on the side. So I was trying to fit it into the planning and developments for mixed uses because that's where the acreage change is going. Right now, there is incentives, but the incentives are for the development of affordable housing. Even looking at the destiny and dimensional regulations as drafted for incentives to create affordable housing, I had a hard time understanding if I was a developer and I was reading this, what standards am I going off of? The units of measure are all mixed, messed up. You know, I think basically this section was lifted from the planned unit development for residential uses, which then got me to thinking of why do we have that? And why do we have a multifamily housing, which are very similar? So, this is beginning to open a gigantic can of worms and there's just more and more and more things that need to be addressed. So, at some point, you know, in the architecture world, they call it project creep, we're starting to have some sort of zoning creep. And so, we really need to think about where are those boundaries of, how far in the weeds do we want to go? Because every time there's a new suggestion, it's opening up this other sort of thing. And I agree with Bill that it would be great if we could undertake this as one major zoning project and maybe a way to think about it even to.
Are you talking about fudgs?
Yes.
I agree, I think, you know, I think you guys might do better to table it a little bit.
Just table it, because right now, they're even in the zoning ordinance themselves. We have, we have PUD for residential. They're not even in the same section of the zoning, they're dispersed. You've got some here, you've got some here.
Because eventually, that's gonna come up down the road if we don't address it. We take care of this with the building and then we can go back on that.
I mean, this is.
Because there's a lot in there.
If we were to, if we were to, I'm getting a little off topic, but I'm trying to think about this in a comprehensive way about, if we need to tackle stuff, where would we tackle it? First of all, our definitions section is awful. There's duplicative terms, there's terms that are used, you know, use building, building use. I mean, it's crazy. So that whole section needs to be reworked. But you want to make sure that that's consistent with the terms that are actually being used in the ordinance. So, you know, it's, that's why it's important, you know, that's why it's better to do these things comprehensively because you can address all these at the same time. We talked about, or the highway business zone talked about, reorganizing how we have standards for dimensional standards, that we've got, you know, a whole section that's got everything related to a residential zone in one section. We have everything that's related to the downtown business in one section rather than having it disperse over various areas so that everything for that zone is in one location and we can access it. The PUD stuff is complicated, it's a mess, you know. And I don't really want to start getting into it, honestly. I think this is starting to get into some project creep. But I don't know, logistically, from an organizational standpoint, where we would put incentives for mixed use other than in that area. So that's, and I think we just trash some of this stuff and rewrite it. So, so I'm starting, I'm starting to get frustrated and, you know, it's getting more and more and more complicated. So, project creep, where do you want to end this? You know, what would be the next step? I think the board needs to have a discussion on, do you want to try to do some zoning overhaul that's specific to economic development? I mean, there's a lot that could be done just with that frame mind. There's things that you could be doing for permitting, streamlined permitting. That could be another major sort of overhaul topic. But again, it's got, you know, there's, everything is interconnected. It's like a giant wheel with all of the gears. And all of the gears have to work. And right now, the machine ain't working too smoothly. There's just conflicting language. And so, you know, that's, I'm saying my piece on it right now. The board needs to make a decision on where they want to go next and how far we take this. The incentives also, I want to just note that, even looking at the incentives that we had talked about and even David was great enough to provide me with some ideas and some suggestions of, from a developer standpoint, where would incentives be enticing to him?
Parking.
Well, the parking was my own thing. But, which I took from another section on PUDs. But we have to make sure that we're not conflicting with the other sets of incentives that are already in the zoning ordinance. We have a 40R zoning that allows shared parking, that has design standards. Yes, you have to build affordable housing, but we want that. You know, we've got a TDR ordinance that, a way to use TDR is to provide incentives that you can't get anywhere else in the ordinance. If we're providing the same incentives over and over again in different ordinances and none of those ordinances are getting used, then either the incentives are off or it's, do you see what I'm getting at? It's like you want, you want to provide that carrot, but you don't want to provide like a mangled carrot in three different ways. So.
I want to let her finish, Jessica.
Oh, sorry, I just had an idea about how to maybe do that. I don't want to interrupt Jessica's time.
I think I can get off my rant.
No, I just think that if we stick to kind of what, just as an idea here, sort of how Jessica has the draft worded now. And if we take, and we include, I think, the reduction from 10 to 5 is agreeable. I don't think you guys would have a problem with that. I think it's something that came out of.
That's great.
Yeah, we stick to that as the kind of, the one change we make to the planned unit development. I think we really, and then obviously the other planned unit development issues that have to be dealt with, that may exist, that we sort of put those to a, to a more comprehensive process. Because I'm saying it deserves more study. But I think we seem to have a draft that could be, you know, agreeable and move forward. And I think, you know, we have a general consensus on as a way to kind of, you know, move forward here as a path, a path forward. And the rest we table for more comprehensive discussion.
So, just a couple more things. So the question is, I didn't, I didn't think about the gross square footage definition. I didn't, I didn't, when I looked at it quickly, I didn't see any difference. That's why I left it out, so it wasn't inadvertent, it was just an oversight on my part. So that needs to be part of this because this is what's gonna get submitted back to Barbara to go to full city council. So I need to add it on there if that's what you want to do.
I'm sorry, Jessica, what was that again?
The definition about the gross square.
Floor area.
Okay, so that's back in, that's it.
Well, I'm not saying whether it is or not, I'm saying I didn't leave it off this draft on purpose. I over, it was an oversight on my part. So the board needs to give me guidance on whether to add it back or not. The second thing that we have not talked about, this is kind of a big deal and it's just been skipped over, is under the retail and service, the convenience market, you know, I had stricken out the language in regards to the highway business district, convenience markets are only permitted in the planned business development. So I need to ensure that the board still wants to move that forward. And I've also changed the permitting structure, so.
On that, on that, as I could, if you adopt that with Jessica just said, you don't need to adopt, you might, you may not need to adopt making a planned business development from five to two acres. If you thought.
I mean, I don't.
The whole idea of.
But I don't want to, I don't want to cowed at Cumberland Farms either.
No, no, I know, I realize that. But the whole idea of private development is to have more than one building on one lot.
Correct.
So two acres is kind of tight.
Getting tight.
But if you get rid of the Cumberland Farms and maybe it's not Cumberland Farms, but that convenience market, if you did that one, you could maybe say three acres, does that make you more comfortable or something?
Well, that's what it was originally, it was three.
It was three acres.
Well, that's what I'm kind of getting at.
Right, and we have to think about, you have to think about the lot coverage. So even, and this was a comment that I made in the earlier draft, that at two acres with a 50% lot coverage, you still, you have an acre to develop. And that includes parking lot and building. So, so you're not gonna get a lot, you're not gonna get a 50,000 square foot building on a, you know. So, so I think that there could be some entertaining the thought of bumping it back up to three. And I think that, but I also want you to note that I've changed the permitting to go from a special permit from the ZBA to a special permit to the planning board.
By all means.
And nobody's, you know. So, so I want to make sure that you're aware of that because I'm putting a B in here instead of having just an SP. So that's, that's taking it out of the ZBA jurisdiction to review a site plan, which I honestly don't think is their role in my world. I prefer that kind of analysis when it comes to traffic and is under the planning board jurisdiction because they do it more frequently than the ZBA does.
So do you want to lend you a little, I mean, you're asking for some direction on a couple of different points here.
I'm just making you aware that, I mean, this has not, this has been in every single draft you've received and we've never discussed it. So I just, I'm just making you aware that it's there. You can, you can either agree or disagree, but I just wanted the board to make note of that.
And did you also make the changes, like in mixed industrial, the 10 acres?
I'm, I don't know what to do in, which one, oh, this is the last one, six one? Yes.
Yeah, like you're making that 10 acres, possibly five acres.
So planned unit development for mixed uses has been dropped from 10 acres to five acres in the neighborhood business.
In downtown business as well.
Right, and then, you know, again, I'm looking at this going, planned industrial development, you need 15 acres. Is there even a site in town of 15 acres that could host a planned industrial development?
Well, look at GPS last year, it's 12 and a half acres. People don't realize that the water was there. But that's probably the biggest parcel right now. And the parcel of October coming is 13 acres, so.
That's still under the 15, or something. So, you know, again, while, while the body's open, you know, if we're submitting this to council and if Barbara's gonna change the zoning, should that, I mean, this is what I'm talking about, project creep. I mean, this is what I'm talking about, project creep. It's like, I noticed it and then I'm like, ah, no, can't do it. No, can't do it. So anyway, so maybe that's something that's looked at again under our planned business development for all of them. So, anyway.
Okay. Well, I think we've heard from everyone today. We can go through some of these things that she talked about and maybe try to talk amongst ourselves a little bit and lend some, lend some direction for our next draft. Or we could table and just continue the discussion to another meeting. Where do you want to go, Sam?
Well, I mean, does anybody have anything that they would like to put on the table?
I think we should, I agree with the idea about moving to three acres. I think that's just a no-brainer.
Yeah.
That's just me.
Well, especially if that change for the convenience out of planned development would fix that.
Then they could go on any lot that meets that zone.
That meets the zone.
And then, and then we could keep it at three, which kind of seems to, yeah.
Can I just throw something out? They just, I connected a couple of things concerning Bill's proposal here. You have 25% buildings adding on, you know, 25%, not to exceed 25% of what exists. And then the idea of redevelopment of an existing building. I think there, it would be helpful to have incentives for redevelopment of existing buildings. And 25% of, you know, adding on to it, not to exceed 25% is also a thing that comes from non-conforming uses. Non-conforming uses, like East Hampton cannot grant a variance for use. But there are several non-conforming uses in town. And the people that have structures where non-conforming uses are taking place can continue on as long as they continue. And they can expand the size of the building no more than 25% of the original footprint. So I see a theme here.
So that could be, that could be under the 6.103 exemption. So if we were looking at, for example, you know, the business next to the post office, they were looking to expand, then they could expand their...
Okay, so then, again, where does that end? So I'm gone and dead and there's another planner here and there's something in the books. And we forget for 20 years that this building at one point was 50 or 40 or 30 or whatever it is. Do you...
Well, you can record it.
Well, you're supposed to record it.
Yeah.
You're not supposed to record these things.
Well, and if there's, I guess, right.
I mean, the answer is that I think I might do this and that before, but that's the problem. That should never have been recorded the way that it was recorded.
With the variance for that specific...
That was recorded wrong.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but anyway, so it's there. It's a mechanism.
One of the big things that we might be able to say for moving this forward is to take the PUDs and say, we're going to put them to the side right now.
Yes.
I mean, because that's clearly a big thing that's, that's gonna really slow this down on your end and everyone's. And the traffic thing, also, we can say, clearly the thing that you brought up, Bill, is another thing that we, that we know we want to put to the side for now. What do you guys think about that?
Well, I mean, I think, I think we can agree for the PUD that we can change it from five to, five to three, right?
What's that, five? Five to three?
PUD, planned industrial development, P...
PBD.
PUD is...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, for the super...
Right? But so we can agree that that piece can be changed, right?
Yes, going to three, yeah. But I was saying, we're talking about all the incentives and all the extras that are kind of burying, burying Jess right now, that they're all, it's getting too deep, you were saying, yes?
What?
That's eight point, that's section 8.7.
Well, that's, and that's, that's the table of uses. So I mean, that's...
I think you meant the PUD.
Yeah, I did, PUD.
Yeah, that's all piece.
So this whole piece, you feel like we should look at it separately?
I think it's, I think there's a whole host of issues in there.
But do you feel comfortable just with PUD only reducing its size from 10 to five acres?
For now.
Right, maybe stop, period, right there.
Right, and just stop there. Only in the table of uses of the dimensional regulations, basically. Leave the, leave the language as is for now, although...
And then we'll be worrying really...
So we're in agreement then that we, that we leave it at five and don't reveal the rest of it in this, in this initiative?
Until, until future. I feel like this should be, this should be put on the near...
I mean, the other, the other idea, if, you know, the city doesn't have money to hire a consultant to come in. However, the planning board has the authority to develop or set up a zoning committee that could be made up of a multiple different entities. I don't think it needs to be huge. I think it's, you know, something eight or smaller. But, you know, have, and this could be the master plan implementation committee if they wanted to do this and be the zoning.
It's a great mission for it.
You know, I mean, that's what happens in the town of Hadley. They have a master plan implementation committee and what they do is track zoning and then they bring it to the planning board for consideration. We have that, we have that committee already in place. They could certainly be doing that.
But this is, I think, you could switch over. I think you could simply have the planning board say to this committee, new committee, or...
Whatever.
Whatever.
Say, come back in two months with administrative review.
Boom.
Hatched on. I don't think they have to go to the planning board. I think the planning board can start giving some marching orders.
Right. No, I agree. I agree.
And then I think we can just take action on this.
Right. Because, I mean, if we're gonna, if we don't, if, I don't personally have the time to rewrite the entire zoning ordinance. It'd be great if I did, but I don't. And I like my family and I'd like to see them. So...
We'll put it on the agenda maybe for our next meeting?
So I think, you know, that's something to think, whether it's a master plan. Some committee that their, their job is to help draft zoning and then we vet it through the process, like, you know, like we do. And then that way, I don't know. It's an idea. I'm not saying it's the right idea. I'm just saying it's the right idea.
So we have the authority to create, what's the process for creating that committee?
I don't know how any other committees created in town. I mean, if you can create an ad hoc, maybe you have to go through a mayoral, you know...
Can you put it on our agenda for the next week?
You can put it on the agenda, I think, to determine what it is, whether it's the master plan committee. There would have to be administrative code, I believe, that would, would have to be developed through the mayor's office. And so she would have to be on board with it. You know, it's not, you can't just create it. You have to give her approval.
I would stay away from the title, master plan implementation. There's no reason why you can't use the master plan.
Right.
But I think whatever the planning board decides, if the planning board wants to say that on Tuesday, we only go one way, they can do that. And it's up to them to make some marching orders.
So then the thing that was, the administrative site plan approval idea, we've talked about it. It's a great idea. But I think we all agree, from what I've heard, that it's something we also want to bring up at a later date and we'll need to bring on the agenda again and revive and come out. I don't want to see it dropped anymore than I want to see the highway business review district document that gets so little traction, continue to get that much. I want it all to come alive. And I think life, I think you'll see that from the board.
I do want to say one thing to the one counselor in the room, that because money is tight, every time there's a zoning change, it costs the city several hundred dollars to run legal ads. And so there should be some efficiency in the process because we're not gonna have the money in, to be able to run lots of legal ads next year. I mean, we had minimal funds to begin with and this year we're, we're working on basically nothing. So I think that whatever entity is gonna be taking this order, there should be some efficiency in the process and that we have to do a piecemeal because that's what our option is right now. But let's try to make it an efficient process so that we're not wasting tons of money.
All right, I got a, I got a question for you.
Don't look at me. I don't know.
No, it's directed at you. In your opinion, how often should this master plan thing be updated? In other words, we're basing this whole thing on what happened in 2008 from 3,300 people in 2008. This is now gonna be almost 2016. Economic conditions in this town or city are entirely different. You go back in 2008, you had completely built, you couldn't build houses fast enough. Now you got a crash out there, okay? And we're recovering from it. But don't you think if you did a survey of what's going on now, that the outcome would be a lot different than it did back in 2008?
Hard telling, not knowing. I mean, I think there are some, some master plan, some communities, they will do, they'll do reviews every five years. They'll take a new look at the data. They'll maybe do a new survey. They're not gonna redo the entire master plan every five years, but they'll do some moderate data collection to see if the temperature in a community has changed. You know, if, if there was this feeling that the temperature of the community has changed significantly since 2008 to the opinion of some of these things, again, the master plan committee, that's theoretically in existence, could ask the city for a moderate amount of money to redo a community survey or, you know, do something online that's free. I mean, there's things that can be done if, if the planning board felt that they wanted to gauge the temperature again.
And I don't want to, I don't want to start anything. But I will say, after being on the master plan committee and working pretty hard on it, that, and being, you know, a resident who's fairly active in his community, there's not a whole lot that's changed in the last eight years in relation to what we talked about in the master plan committee. We want open space. We want a vibrant downtown. We want a great place for our citizens to live. And that, I mean, that's basically the gist of it. I mean, like, you don't have to get all salty about it, you know what I mean?
That's something that was easy to go in and see if it's corrected.
I mean, honestly, but what are you looking for? What corrections are you looking for?
I don't want any tax overrides. That's what I'm worried about. Tax override, people losing their home, people living on fixed income. That's what I'm worried about, okay?
You should be worried about that. That's, that's a really...
Right, but when you look at the master plan, you don't look at what's in the front, that the easy, what you can change, but it's already been changed. You want to go in there and see, what about highway? What about housing? What about, you know, businesses? That's where you, that's where the crux, and that's where we are now.
I spent the last two years reviewing that document with a, with a great group of people. And it took two years to go through that whole thing and familiarize ourselves with it. And I can say that I completely agree with you. That, I think that, in my opinion, a lot of what's, you've used some of the master plan as momentum for this project. And I think when the master plan's being slated here, it's because it's being called out to support this project. Everything else that was behind it, every single line item that's in the backend, I'd be surprised if you'd find more than three in the entire document, line items that would be updated or changed.
Okay. Where is that?
I don't think I make any progress on reviewing the plan.
No, it was a report. So two years.
So I think we need to, I think we've probably moved about as far as we're gonna move tonight.
I think so.
And I think we need to motion to continue the hearing.
Somebody else has to make a motion.
Yeah.
I move to continue the hearing to a later date.
We, we need to pick a date.
We did this the last, the two hearings ago.
Okay, so the next meeting, we actually have some permit applications, I feel like. Let me see.
Well, no, honestly, give Jessica a little time.
Yeah, agree.
She only had a week. That way, no, seriously. That way you can push her a little bit. Give her some time and she can come back with a pretty good document and you can go and say, hey.
I'd say in a month. I'd give, if we could have, you know...
A month? That's good.
Let me see, what's today? I have no idea. We're on the weekend. Fourth of April. So we'll meet on the 28th and then we'll meet again. So who's got a calendar? May, what's the first meeting in May? Second, first, second Tuesday.
Josh is going back. I think he's got us covered.
The fifth is the first Tuesday. 12th is the second Tuesday.
So 12th, thank you.
12th.
So May 12th?
Sounds good.
I won't speak here, but it sounds good.
May 12th. Okay, so continue that proposal.
Will you let ordinance?
At six o'clock, I'll let them know.
Motion.
Is that at six?
At six?
Six o'clock.
I'll second it.
May 12th, six.
Yes, May 12th, six o'clock.
Do you need it spelled out longer?
Uh, hold on, a second. Sorry, Libby seconds.
She, Libby made it, Chet second.
Oh, Libby made the motion. Chet second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All against? Extentions? And it passes. You'll have to do it by Mulligan.
They can't, I mean, we'll have, I'll meet you.
And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I think a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And have a great night, everyone. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You appreciate it.
Good to hear you're listening.
I'll enjoy your input.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very well.
I may call someone.
This is on the website, right?
I bet she can. I've had kind of a busy day, so hopefully I remember.
Dan, it's good to see you.
It's good to see you too. Oh, really? Oh, okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
You've got big point at him. That ball rolling and now it's just snowball.
Are you gonna... Okay. My daughters and so much. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Take care of it.
Oh, good.
No, I got you. The next planning board meeting, I have to, I have to... I know, I know, I know.